Good afternoon. Will the Suffolk Planning Commissioner meeting for September come to order? I will call on Commissioner Goodman for the invocation.
Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come together once again to take care of the business of this city. And God, we thank you for the wisdom to do so. And we thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Goodman, do your call a roll, please.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Everwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Commissioner Rector.
Here.
Commissioner Singleton.
Here.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Have a corner, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Are there any corrections in the minutes from the August meeting? If not, they will stand as presented. We have a special occasion today. I see Mr. Benton is in the audience, and I would like to recognize him for his terms on this planning commission and for all the diligent work that he has done for the City of Suffolk. Mr. Benton, will you come to the podium, please?
You need to come to the city staff, please. Yes, you want to go. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. I've been calling you Mr. Chairman for, I don't know, 22 years, and it's difficult for me to call you Mr. Howard Benton. But I'd like to recognize the work that you've done for the city over the past years. I'd like to present you with a resolution of appreciation to Mr. Howard Benton, whereas Howard C. Benton was appointed to the Suffolk Planning Commission and served from July 1984 until June 2021. And whereas while serving as a chairman, he was dedicated to the betterment of the city and actively participated in the proceedings and planning commission while also serving as a member of the Committee on Ordinance. And whereas the Suffolk Planning Commission extends an appreciation to Howard Benton for his service to the community and wishes him the best of all in the future endeavors. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Planning Commission of the City of Suffolk, Virginia, that this resolution of appreciation was presented to Mr. Howard C. Benton for his dedicated service as a member of the Suffolk Planning Commission, signed September 21st, 2021, by Arthur L. Singleton. Again, Mr. Benton, I want to thank you and the Commissioners. Will you give us a standing ovation, please?[210.23][210.23](Applause).
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Don't make any comments.
Well, given an opportunity you can only imagine.[226.73][226.73](Laughter). To Arthur, to each of you, I certainly appreciate the opportunity of, first of all, getting to know some of you that I might not have known otherwise. It has been a delight working with you, not only you, but the predecessors that were here before you. I would turn to the city staff. The City of Suffolk is blessed with a staff with knowledge and experience in providing their leadership to the bodies that we represent here. It has been a tremendous benefit to this city. You know, I may just say as a side note, I was bred, born, and raised in this area. This is my hometown. I am told that Mills Staylor and myself were infants at birth at Virginia, the Virginian Hospital, right around here on Clay Street. Is that right, Mills?
You're 100% correct.
Thank you for that. At that time, there were three hospitals in the City of Suffolk. Neither of those three exist anymore. My address has changed three times without me ever moving.[295.58][295.58](Laughter). I was born in Nazman County. Then we became the City of Nanzamont. Now, out there where I live, we are the City of Suffolk. Times have changed, but it's all been in a good way. Thank you so much. I appreciate this more than you realize.
Thank you again, Mr. Benton. Today, we have five items on our public hearings. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and 5 minutes for rebuttals by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is a conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-017, West Washington Street Hookah Bar and Lounge. Mr. Goodman, will you, Goodman, Mr. Goodman, will you read the caption, please?
My pleasure. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-017, West Washington Street Hookah Bar and Lounge, submitted by Delia Giles Leekey Hookah Lounge applicant on behalf of Washington Lofts LLC property owner in accordance with 31-306 and Section 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a bar and nightclub on property located at 130 West Washington Street, zoning map 34G18, parentheses A, parcel 304. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, Zone CBD, Central Business District, zoning district, and HC, Historic Conservation Overlay District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Mixed Use Core District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2021-017. And Grace Brazil will provide the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Ms. Brazil?
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As stated, this CUP is to establish a bar nightclub at property located at 130 West Washington Street. The property is located within the Central Growth Area. The property is zoned and surrounded by Property Zone CBD, Central Business District, and is located within the Historic District. The property features a building that was constructed circa 1890, and due to the age of the building, the applicant has provided both an asbestos and lead paint report that concluded that no asbestos or lead was discovered in the first floor of 130 West Washington Street. The applicant proposes to establish a bar nightclub at the property to be able to operate a hookah bar and lounge. The applicant proposes to utilize only the ground floor of the existing building for the proposed use. The second floor of the building consists of apartments and does not propose to be utilized as part of this request. Parking for the property is currently provided by a combination of on-street parking and nearby public parking. The applicant's proposed hookah bar lounge is proposed to include a kitchen, dining area, lounge area designated for smoking with pool tables, and office spaces. A new wall is proposed to be constructed to enclose a space for kitchen to provide food for dining. See if this works. So right here is where the new proposed wall is going to be, so that's essentially the only improvement going to be made to the interior as far as building walls. Lastly, the applicant has proposed sound and smoke abatement in the establishment to help offset any impacts to the adjacent properties and surrounding area since there will be the hookah smoking component of the business. The hookah bar lounge will provide various tobacco products, food, and alcohol on-site. The applicant will and must obtain the required ABC permits from the Virginia Department of Alcoholic Beverage Control. Music will be provided utilizing a sound system within the establishment. No outside use of the property is proposed with this request. The proposed hours of operation are from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Saturday. So this is the conceptual layout before you. In accordance with Article 4, Section 31-408 of the UDO, it is understood that due to existing development density in the CBD zoning district, public facilities are adequate to serve the proposed use. Therefore, the Departments of Public Utilities and Public Works has no concerns with this request. So lastly, to cover the review criteria for CUPs, CUPs have recognized that certain uses are permitted through the approval process when the right set of circumstances and conditions are found acceptable. The proposed conditional use shall conform to the character of the neighborhood within the same zoning district in which it is located. The proposed use, as stated, will utilize the ground floor of an existing two-story commercial building located in an established commercial area in the downtown core of the City of Suffolk, which does have a mix of different commercial and retail uses. Also typically within downtown, most of the time, the second floor does consist of apartments. The proposed hookah bar lounge will have a smoking area, dining area, and will provide music in the establishment. The proposed use is similar to other uses seen in the immediate surrounding area. However, there is residential uses in the immediate area. The applicant proposes to install insulation materials for the drop ceiling and soundproofing barriers for the walls of the ground floor for the sound abatement. Additionally, the applicant proposes to install smoke purifiers and cleaners to filter the smoke that will be produced by the hookah mechanisms. The proposed bar nightclub at this site is consistent with other various uses that are located within the downtown core, and with the proper sound and smoke abatement shall be no more injurious to the surrounding neighborhood than would any other uses permitted in the same district. And then lastly, what I would like to cover is the proposed use shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of vibration, noise, odor, dust, smoke, or gas. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Saturday from 6:00 PM to 2:00 AM. These proposed hours of operation do not align with hours of operation that have been consistently approved for similar uses that have required a conditional use permit. Similar uses have consistently been approved with hours of operation of Sunday through Thursday, 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Friday through Saturday, 9:00 AM to 12:00 AM midnight. Due to the proximity of residential uses, staff has recommended, as a condition, that all operations cease at 11:00 PM on weekdays and midnight on Friday and Saturday evenings. Staff has provided a condition requiring sound abatement to be installed for the drop ceiling and walls of the ground floor for the subject property. However, for the smoke abatement, it is required and will be addressed at the time a building permit is obtained for the change in use of the building. Staff believes this request with the recommended conditions shall not be noxious or offensive by reason of odor, dust, smoke, or gas. Staff finds that the proposed use of a bar nightclub meets criteria for conditional use permit set forth in Section 31-306 of the UDO. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2021-017 with the conditions as noted in staff's report and in the attached resolution. That concludes my presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions you guys may have on the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to present this item?
Good afternoon. I'm Deidra Gillis, who is proposing to open the Low Key Hookah Lounge here in downtown The only concern that I had was the hour change, that I would like to, I would like to extend the hours to the 2:00 AM. So that was the only reason for me walking up here was due to the hour change, and that was the only thing. I'm hoping that the sound abatement and the air purifier system would help, you know, in accordance with staying in compliance with not disturbing the attendants or the apartments above me. And that's all. If y'all had any other questions?
We'll save the question until the end of the
Okay.
...presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gillis.
Thank you.
Does anyone else actually speak in favor of this request? Does anyone like to speak in opposition? Okay. Having none, we'll close the hearing here. And Commissioners, questions? Motion?
I do have one question for Grace.
And it does reference the hours. And as I read the narrative, they were, wanted to be closed on Sunday, but when we, when I look here at number 13, it says to be open Sunday through Thursday. So, and the whole hour thing kind of changed because they wanted to be open from 6:00 in the evening until, well, 2:00. So, does that just mean you're giving them that latitude? Is that what that means?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
And it is consistent with what staff has previously recommended for a condition on previous CUPs that have been approved.
Okay. All right. I got it.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
May I ask, since she's at the podium, may I ask another question?
Yes.
I have a quick question for you. Is the hours of operation restriction something that the city uses mainly in the Central Business District, or is that something consistent throughout the whole city?
And I will turn toward the director from what I understand or from what I recall, looking at all the previous CUPs that I referenced. Majority of them are located within the Central Growth Area. However, they are consistent hours of operation that we would apply, you know, for similar uses. Something we do look at is location
Right.
...criteria, so I can't really speak to different locations.
Okay.
That's correct. I'm trying to even recall if we have a similar conditional use permit in other areas outside of the downtown. The, the, the answer to your question is we would propose the same standards within, for a similar conditional use permit.
Anywhere in the city?
Within the city, correct.
Okay.
All right. I answered the question. Thank you.
Any other questions while Ms. Brazil is at the podium?
My assumption would be that these hours, even though they're set by precedent, are in consultation with, with other departments within the city who give input in, as this conditional use permit is passed around the different departments. I mean, it's not purely a planning department function when they come up with these hours, is it? I mean, they've received inputs from different departments.
That's correct. These hours of operation are consistent with past comments that are provided from the Police Department.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Brazil.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Ms. Gillis a question?
Thank you.
Ms. Gillis, have you come up, please?
Ms. Gillis, I have two questions for you. In light of all that has been said, first question is, is the hours of operations a deal breaker for you?
Not necessarily.
Okay. And my second question that I would like to know, because I'm kind of torn on this. Why did you pick downtown?
Um, because
Not to put you on the spot, but I was just curious.
Well, I was in search for a location here closer to home because this is where I reside, and I just wanted to do something within the community. And being that it's within walking distance and, you know, it's easy for people to have the ability to come out and view, I felt that that was, it would be a great, a great asset to the community.
Thank you, Ms. Gillis.
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions, Ms. Gillis, while she was at the podium?
I got a comment. I believe it's two or three years ago, we had a party hall in this area. If I remember correctly, the man was, I believe, is a Marine. He wanted the 2:00 AM thing. I think we told him to come back in a year. If I remember correctly, it was, did not get changed. It stayed the regular 12:00. I just think it needs to stay kind of uniform with everybody else personally, you know, the 12:00. So, that's my comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Gillis. Commissioners, any comments, or motion?
I would like to move approval of CUP 2021-017 with the 14 conditions.
So that's the motion with the 14 conditions.
Yes.
Right here, a second.
Our second motion for the personal vote.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on the motion?
I got a quick question. I'm a little confused. So are we going with the 12:00 or the 2:00 AM at this point?
We're going with 12:00 with the conditions, the 14 conditions.
All right. I'll just make it sure.
Condition number 13 says 12:00.
Yeah, okay. I'm sorry. I thought, I thought you said 14. That's what I was.
No, 14.
Any other discussion on the motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Goodman, will you call a roll, please?
Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of seven to one with Commissioner Edwards voting in opposition.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Goodman. Ms. Gillis, you have a motion going to City Council on, with approval for the 14 conditions that were set by the commission. It'll be going before City Council on October 20th. The next item on our agenda is the conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-019, Western Tidewater Community Service Board. Ms. Goodman, will you read the mission?
Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-019, Western Tidewater Community Service Board, submitted by Attorney Joshua Pretlow, agent on behalf of Western Tidewater Community Service Board applicant on behalf of the Industrial Development Authority of the City of Franklin property owner in accordance with Sections 31-306 and 31-406 of the Unified Development Ordinance to grant a conditional use permit to establish a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility on property located at 5268 Godwin Boulevard, zoning map nine, parcel 58. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Chuckettuck Voting Borough, Zone B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Rural Conservation Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2021-019. And Alexis Baker will provide the staff report, Mr. Chairman.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. As mentioned, this conditional use permit request is to establish a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility on property located at 5268 Godwin Boulevard at the existing Western Tidewater Community Service Board facility, also known as Tidewater House. The property is located in the Rural Conservation Use District and is located in the Chuckettuck Voting Bureau. The property is Zone B2 with B2 General Commercial Zoning District to the north with office and commercial uses, and RE, Rural Estate Zoning District, the south, east, and west with single family and vacant, vacant property. The existing facility currently provides outpatient counseling and mental health services. A conditional use permit is necessary to allow for a medical, physical, and mental rehabilitation resident facility to allow for inpatient treatment. Specifically, the applicant is proposing to renovate their existing building on the second floor to accommodate a crisis-receiving center and short-term residential crisis stabilization unit for adults 18 years and older. To support this use, the renovations to the site will focus on the addition of 16 short-term 15-day crisis stabilization beds and the supporting adaptations for residential and treatment spaces on the second floor. Additionally, existing bathrooms on the second floor will be expanded to include room for showers. The existing kitchen on the first floor will serve programming on both the first and second floor. The applicant will offer services to patients including group therapy, individual, individual therapy, psychiatric assessment with medication management, case management, and peer support services. Patients will primarily be admitted on a voluntary basis. Individuals unable to consent to treatment will be admitted provided they meet safety criteria for the support available at the facility. A licensed mental health professional will serve as administrator for the facility and will be supported through an on-call rotation of other clinical staff to ensure consultation is available 24/7 from a licensed mental health professional. At a minimum, a licensed clinician, a qualified mental health professional, a licensed practical nurse, a direct support professional, and a peer support specialist will be available. Staff reviewed this conditional use permit request according to the Unified Development Ordinance and development considerations and concerns. Traffic engineering expressed no traffic concerns. Daytime use of the facility will not be increased and is not anticipated to create the need for additional parking spaces. Additionally, the existing building is served by city water. The building has a private septic system. As part of the conditions for this conditional use permit, a letter approved from a professional engineering, engineer showing the existing septic can support the new use, and a permit to operate must be approved by the Health Department prior to building permit issuance. Furthermore, the Department of Public Utilities will require additional public facility report information addressing fire protection and if the new use can be adequately sustained by the existing utilities prior to building permit issuance. When evaluating this application according to UDO, staff has determined that the proposed use will not impede orderly development or be a detriment to the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare. The applicant has stated that due to the closing of mental health facilities in Virginia, those experiencing mental health crises do not have many options. While the facility will mostly be for those voluntarily seeking treatment, this facility will also allow police an option to drop off individuals with mental or behavioral issues or suicidal ideation at this facility versus holding them in custody while awaiting psychiatric treatment in an overcrowded hospital emergency department. This facility can act as a treatment center or as a stabilization facility until longer-term care options are determined. Therefore, staff recommends approval for CUP 2021-019 with the conditions stated in staff's report. This concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions after the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward in favor of this item?
Good afternoon, members of the commission. My name is Joshua Pretlow. I represent Western Tidewater Community Services Board and have represented them for approximately 20 years. The first question I got earlier was, had the City of Franklin owned this building in Suffolk? It is merely a financing mechanism through a tax-free because Western Tidewater is regulated and governed by appointees by the City of Suffolk, Franklin, Southampton, and Olive White. And it is, that's merely the financing mechanism to make it effective at the time the property was purchased. As the report indicated, and staff, I would say, has been very, very helpful in moving this along, the state has closed their mental hospitals to admissions, as you may have read in the papers over a period of time. And the reason they closed them principally is because they'd not been able to staff them adequately. Western Tidewater was asked to create this facility. The state is furnishing all the money for the renovations to be done and for the operations of this facility. and for the operations of this facility. Of course, it'll be funded by various Medicare, Medicaid, and insurance facilities, but it is very much a short-term deal, 15-day maximum. Then you have to go somewhere, whether it's a private residential facility or back on the street or whatever. But we can coordinate that discharge time through our services. Western Tidewater, for those of you not familiar, has almost 500 employees. That, that's what they work on, is mental health issues, drug addiction as well, and things of that nature. This crisis center is for people, as she said, for volunteer people that they realize or their family realizes and takes them there. They have to get there. We don't pick them up. Well, the police may carry them there if they, if they find somebody, which goes hand in hand with the creation of what they, they are proposing to do across the state. Instead of dialing 911 when you have mental crisis and problems like that, the new number when it's effective will be 988. That will then get transferred down to the proper locations and so forth so that mental health people can help them. And this helps clean up the problem of officers having to deal with people who have mental health crises all of the time. This is, property is adjacent to the large Dominion Power Facility, which is immediately next door to it with trucks and stuff that come and go all times of the day and night when we need them for emergencies and storms and things of that nature. It, on the other side, on the south side of it, there's a large ravine that's there that separates it with a big tree line, probably 100 feet or more from the property that Mr. Creekmore owns there on the south side. It should not cause any problems. We will continue to operate the, what's called the Tidewater House on the first floor, which is a day-support facility for people who qualify for that. And there are lots of things that can go on. By putting these two in conjunction with each other, the people who are there in a crisis need something to do. This gives them activity times and so forth to be able to do it in the facilities that are already in the location. We hope it'll be the pleasure to send this on to council. And I'll be glad to answer any questions about it, if you have some about it. I'm not aware if there's any opposition to this. And again, my conversations have been with Mr. Goomis, with Ms. Baker, and with other staff people to, to try to ensure, as well as some council members, to ensure them that this can move on through promptly so the state grant money can come on down, they can start the renovations as quickly as possible. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer. I hope it'll be the pleasure. This is a benefit to the community.
Thank you, Mr. Pretlow. We'll have questions after we close the public hearing, sir.
All right, thank you, sir.
Does anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone speaking in opposition?
Yes, I'm Eddie Creekmore. I live at 455 Pembroke Lane, Suffolk. Reference to, what I did not hear is anything referenced to security in this proposal. Currently, we've had people walking our yard confused, directed them back over there. We've actually had somebody legally hunting four or 500 yards from there. Somebody came walking through the woods. And this is a volunteer, you know, there are only 16 beds. The other part of me feels like we're not doing enough. They're correct. It's a office building. It's not a mental health facility. And on Pembroke Lane, which has been in the news and we've all seen, there's three cans, four cans sitting out in front of my house. They've been there every year. And that's the way I kind of feel that they're doing is, yeah, the state's putting money there for 16 beds, which is not going to be voluntary. There's, they're going to fill up quick within voluntary commitments. This isn't just people having crisis in Suffolk, it's the whole region. A proper facility needs to be built. We're just pouring money into this. It's going to fill up really quick. It's already crowded. You drive by there, you know, cross Route 10 on the other side. Somebody's shooting AR-15 every day. As he said, there's going to be people coming in and out from Virginia Power. I don't know if people, any mental crisis wants to be in a, what it is is an office building. Let's face it. We're changing an office building around, putting people in there. We already have voluntary people walking around. I have not heard anything mentioned today on security. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Creekmore. Does anyone else speak in opposition? Hearing, Mr. Pretlow, do you have any rebuttal to Mr. Creekmore's questions?
Yes, I'll be glad to address that. Having represented them for 20 years, I didn't know Mr. Creekmore. I knew his father well. I've never heard any questions addressed of the running of the facility and the people that are there and now are intellectually challenged. But there are people there that watch them. I can't help what other people do as far as firing weapons and doing those things. I hear those because I live out in the country as well. But it is only for 15 days, state maximum, by state rules. That's all it's intended to be. We're not asking for more than that, for people to be able to get some quick assistance and either get back to life or either move on to another facility. We're not anticipating, as she said, we're not anticipating having people involuntary commitments. That's not the purpose of it. It is for volunteer only. And if they don't stay there and they don't abide by the rules, then they'll have to leave. We can only try to assist the people that want to voluntarily get this assistance. And there are substantial numbers that go there each day that are picked up and carried so that they can try to have some form of life and entertainment other than sitting at home watching a bunch of bad TV.
Thank you, Mr. Pretlow.
Thank you.
We will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Ms. Chairman, Mr. Pretlow, if you don't mind returning to the podium, getting into your steps for the day. Since it's now going to be a temporary resident facility with people staying there, as you say, up to 15 days, what kind of overnight staff will be there?
It's full-time staff. It'll be 24/7 staff there. It's, it's not put them in a bed and leave them. It's full-time staff. If you're familiar, we presently have, I think there are nine homes scattered around the city that have 24/7 care for people. And they're taking care of very well and have a home to live in that normally would not be able to get out of their homes at all. They don't have people to help take care of them sufficiently for their needs and so forth. And these facilities are supported by the state. And you have to have them in every locality, just about. So, they're, they're just not, those facilities couldn't handle these people because they have medical and physical needs all the time. These people are just people going through a crisis from a mental, emotional standpoint to be able to be there. They're not physically disabled and that sort of thing that would qualify to go into the, the bids and the full-time 24/7 where they live sometimes, you know, until they die. Not to be crude about it, but some of those people cannot do anything for themselves that we take care of. And they stay there as long as they need to. But these would be people, it's a temporary thing. If you have a family member that has emotional problems from time to time, they could go in there if there's, if there's a room available, stay for a few weeks, get some heavy counseling for a couple of weeks, and then they have to move on, either back home or where they came from, or somewhere of that nature. They're, they're not staying there. We're not forcing anybody to stay.
Thank you, Mr. Pretlow. Any other question, Mr. Pretlow, while you was at the podium? Thank you, Mr. Pretlow.
Just one. I don't think I really heard an answer to Mr. Creekmore's question about the security. We got 16 beds, and did I hear no security?
No, there will be security there, but we don't have police on-site all the time.
No, 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 I didn't ask about that.
No, no. But I'm, there's always some security, plus the building stays locked all of the time when people are inside. And there are people there at the desk and so forth to, to monitor anybody coming and going. Even when I go in, I have to be buzzed into the building when we were having meetings there. And at those, if, if the public goes in, the Board of Directors, who are appointed by the four localities, when they come for meetings and stuff, they have to sign in and sign out. It's, it's pretty strict. And this morning, we had a bi-monthly board meeting and actually it was done by Zoom and actual attendance in the facility at Harborview where our office is, principal office is now because we serve all of Tidewater for meetings and for a central CSP to, to do certain things. Have to go in, sign in, get your temperature taken, all those sort of things. When you walk in the building, there's somebody sitting there always to watch.
Thanks.
I think Officer Jackson may have been there on some occasions or somebody from the Sheriff's Office when we meet and when there's any question about a number of people coming and going.
Remain there, Mr. Pretlow. Mr. Edwards?
Mr. Pretlow, I have a quick question.
Yes, sir.
In regards to Mr. Creekmore's comment about it is basically a apartment building. So, so my question is, I know it's going to be-
No, I think he said it's an office building.
Office building, well, make sure.
Yes, it is, it is, it is an office building.
And it's going to be refurbished for the use of-
Only the second floor. The, the remainder of it will stay as the same use that it has now, which it has been for 15 years probably.
And, and so, my, my question is, I mean, since now people are going to actually stay there, are there any state requirements for having spaces for people to walk around and things like that? Or is that not a requirement by the state?
We have, that building was built as an office building on the front. The T in the back is, was an open warehouse. That is a facility that is used principally for the day-support people. It has ping-pong tables, pool tables, places to watch TV, places to do arts, crafts, whatever these people need to do to occupy their time and mind other than just sitting mindlessly there. There is an outdoor space where they go outside. There's some picnic tables they can sit out there and stuff. These people do not wander off. They stay at that facility. This, and I'm not disputing what he says, but I've not heard any problems with these people that are there for a stated purpose wandering off. They're picked up and brought there. They're picked up from their families, brought there during the day for the downstairs Tidewater House. And then they go back home, carried, or carried back home in vans or cars or whatever, depending on how far they're going and the routes that they carry them, to be there all day and then go back home. There's no Tidewater Occupational Center like we used to have that can provide menial jobs.
Right.
This gives them a place to go and participate during the day. And that's what it is. And the, the upstairs is to provide place, but they will also have access for all of the downstairs and stuff during the day when they're not getting counseling. You can't counsel a person, you know, eight hours a day. You work with counseling, they can then go and participate. Then they can come back up, whatever. They're, they're not locked in, but they're not people that want to leave. They're, they're voluntarily, just like the day-support people that we have, to provide them some help in getting through a crisis. The other people are there because they're in that position and can't change that position. But they're, they're not people that will be a risk to anybody at all. And they certainly are not, nobody's carrying guns or anything of that nature. It's a-
Well, thank you for your clarification, Mr. Pretlow.
Helpful facility. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pretlow. Commissioners? Ms. Chairman, I would move the approval of CUP 2021-019 with six conditions. Second. Motion for Commissioner Staler? Second for-
Second.
Mr. Rector, I'm sorry. Any discussion on the motion?
Ms. Chairman, I have one question before we vote and a comment. If I can ask Mr. Creekmore, just for some clarification real quick.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Creekmore, I listened to your opposition to the application and wondering, people wandering off kind of has stuck with me. So, so my question is, wandering off one time is a, you know, things happen in life. So, I just want to make sure I get clarification. Is, is, as my grandma says, is this a happening or did it happen?
This has happened twice in 10 years, but also what I've heard is mostly voluntary. Are people going to be held there on TDOs? That's a, that's a question. And it says, we hear a lot of mostly, you know, this is not a built-for-mental-health facility, as I said, and it's probably not enough. And probably needs to be built better, probably needs a proper facility. That's my concern. I haven't, they did not say just volunteer commitments.
Well, thank you for answering my question. I appreciate it. Ms. Chairman, I just want to make one, one quick comment. Based off the need of the facility itself, I think we all are clear that it's definitely a need for the facility. What I'm struggling with is this is a conditional use permit. And so, our question is, is this building the best use? And if we do a CUP, then that means that other people can use this building for these same kind of activities. And so, that's, that's what I'm torn with because, you know, again, as a land use issue, the question is, is this CUP a best use for this particular piece of property? And that's what I'm torn with. But thank you for, Mr. Pretlow and Mr. Creekmore for your comments. I guess we'll vote.
Mr. Goomis, if you call the roll, please.
Commissioner Creekmore. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes, and there's no relation here.
Commissioner Everwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations, Mr. Pretlow. And this will be fast-tracked, and this will go to City Council on October 6th with the recommendation for approval.
Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is the exception request, CEX 2021-009, 2019 Cassidy Court. Mr. Goomis, will you read the caption, please?
Exception request, CEX 2021-009, 2019 Cassidy Court, submitted by Jason Thomas, Painted Fern applicant, on behalf of Brett and Kelsey Ferris, property owners, in accordance with Section 31 415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit a patio and fence to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 2019 Cassidy Court, zoning map 35P, parcel nine. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, Zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, Inner Ring Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for property located at 2019 Cassidy Court, CEX 2021-009. Brittany Collier will provide the staff report. Ms. Chairman.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. This is an after-the-fact exception request for the permitting of a previously constructed fence and patio replacement and extension to encroach within the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer for property located at 2019 Cassidy Court. The subject property is Zoned RLM Residential Low-Medium Density Zoning District and is a part of the Realroy Estates subdivision. The lot, being 1.3 acres in size, was created in 2009 and features a single-family dwelling and patio, which was constructed in 2016 as well as a recently constructed privacy fence. The subject property is located on the tidal waters of Shingle Creek, which has a Resource Protection Area Buffer. Previously, a six-foot wooden, six-foot-tall wooden privacy fence tall wooden privacy fence was installed on the property without receiving proper permitting through planning and community development. Additionally, the lot was cleared of all understory trees and shrubs, resulting in a total clearance of 2,600 square feet within the 100-foot buffer. The applicant is requesting an after-the-fact exception for the installation of the privacy fence and the clearing of the buffer. The recently installed fence is partially located within the 50-foot seaward portion of the buffer and was constructed to be in line with the neighboring fences. As shown in the images on this slide, the rear portion of the fence was installed in a manner that would not inhibit surface flow. The applicant has two areas in which they would need, oh, I'm sorry. I missed a slide. I'm sorry. Additionally, the applicant is requesting to construct a patio which will be directly adjacent to the house to limit encroachment within the RPA. The applicant has stated that the patio would be to replace the existing one shown in the image on the slide, which was previously installed incorrectly. And I can zoom in a little bit for you, for the patio. The patio replacement will require that 166 feet of impervious surface be placed within the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer. Construction and staging access for the patio are proposed to come from the existing driveway on the north side of the property and come through the gate to the east of the home. The overall limit of disturbance would be 1,025 square feet, of which 385 square feet is within the buffer. The applicant has two areas in which they would need to mitigate. The first being for the 2,600 square feet of clearance, the applicant has proposed to place back within the buffer seven units of understory and shrub vegetation. Canopy trees were not required for the replacement of the clearance as mature vegetation has remained in place. The second being for the 388 square feet of disturbance generated by the recently constructed fence and patio, the applicant is proposing to place one full unit of vegetation back within the buffer. The applicant has provided a buffer restoration plan for the required vegetation replacement that is consistent with the Riparian Buffer Modification and Mitigation Manual. The applicant has also provided one additional understory tree and six additional small shrubs that are not required. Section 31-415 subsection F5 of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District provides criteria when reviewing exception requests. I will touch base on a few of those, however, each one is addressed in staff's report. Granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this ordinance to other property owners in the Preservation Area District. As stated in the narrative from the applicant, the previously constructed fence was constructed in order to be in line with neighboring fences. Additionally, the applicant has provided a buffer restoration plan to offset disturbance generated from the constructed fence, proposed patio, as well as the replacement vegetation for the previous clearing within the buffer. The exception request will be consistent with the purpose and the intent of the Preservation Area District, not injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public's welfare, and is not of substantial detriment to water quality. Fences typically do not have significant areas of impervious surface, and therefore, if designed appropriately, do not impact the water quality functions of the vegetated buffers. The fence was constructed in a manner that would not alter or inhibit surface flow, and replacement vegetation will be placed in the seaward portion of the buffer to aid in the collection and runoff generated from the additional impervious area within the buffer. The proposed exception request is not expected to be injurious to the public welfare and is not of substantial detriment to water quality. Lastly, staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31-415 subsection F5C of the UDO to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of exception request, CEX 2021-009. I'm available to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. We're now open to public hearing. Who would like to come forward and speak in favor of this request?
Hello. Good afternoon. My name's Brett Ferris. This is my wife, Kelsey. We're the property owners at 2019 Cassidy Court. We're both active-duty members of the military. We're not originally from this area. We're originally from Arkansas. We wanted to improve the, our property value, so whenever we do come to sell here in a few years, whatever we decide to do, that will get more value. Sorry, I'm nervous. So we hired a contractor to put a fence in, as well as a patio. He's the only one that came out to look at the property. Sorry. So he, we went with that contractor to install those items. He did it improperly, and also illegally, he didn't get the proper permutation for those things. Once we figured out that he did not have the proper permit, we fired him. We wanted to go through the city, get everything corrected, so nothing came back on us in the end. So that's pretty much it. And I think that would be more of a disturbance to move the fence back versus just to keep it there. And we're putting everything in place so that we can correct the issues that were done. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferris. Does anyone else speak in favor of this request? Does anyone like to speak in opposition? Mr. Ferris, you have any other comments before we close the public hearing?
I'm good, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir. We're now closed the public hearing. And commissioners, questions, comments, motion?
If there are no comments before, I would like to move for the approval of CEX 2021-009.
Motion for approval, Mr. Edwards?
I second.
And Commissioner Hicks. Any discussion in the motion?
Chairman, I have one question for either Ms. Collier or Mr. Goodman. Can I get some clarification on, what is an after-the-fact exception request?
I'm sorry?
I just want a clarification. What is an after-the-fact exception request? And I guess my question is, it's already been done, basically. I mean, I guess if I'm reading correctly, but if we say no today, I mean, what, what happens if, if, if we deny this exception request?
He'd be in violation of the Unified Development Ordinance zoning, and would, we would proceed to move through enforcement procedures.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right.
One, one comment with regards to the motion. I do want to make a correction to your attention, if you will, in the motion that on Exhibit A, the Planning Commission recommendation, the title is correct with regards to the address, but the condition number one cites an incorrect address. We would need to correct that.
Can you state that again, please?
Say that again?
Condition number, condition number one cites a different property.
Okay. Do I need to redo the motion? Let's have another motion with the corrected condition.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve CEX 2021-09 with the corrections to condition one and all other conditions.
Second still. Yes.
Mr. Hutch, is that correct?
Okay. Okay. Mr. Goodman, will you call the roll, please?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Staler.
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Mrs. Ferris, congratulations. There's no other action needed. You can go ahead and enjoy your yard and get your patio.
Fix that patio.
And thanks for the service you do for us.
Continue to work with that.
Okay. Thanks again. The next item on the agenda is an exception request, CEX 2021-010, and it's 3608 Canal Turn Court. Mr. Goodman, will you read the caption, please?
Exception request, CEX 2021-010, 3608 Canal Turn Court, submitted by Amanda Durham Martin, applicant, on behalf of Jacob and Emily Breed, property owners, in accordance with Section 31-415 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area to permit a fence to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 3608 Canal Turn Court zoning map 12H*2B parcel 202. The property area, the affected area is further identified as being located in the Sleepy Hole Voting Borough, Zone PD Plan Development Overlay zoning district. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Inner Ring Suburban Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Exception Request for property located at 3608 Canal Turn Court, CEX 2021-010. Grace Brazil will provide the staff report.
Thank you. As stated, this CBPA exception request is to permit a fence to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 3608 Canal Turn Court. The property is located in the Inner Ring Suburban Use District in the Northern Growth Area. The property is Zoned PD Plan Development Overlay District and is also surrounded by residential property Zoned PD. The property is a part of the Steeple Chase subdivision, and it butts up to wetlands that have connected and contiguous water flow to Dean's Branch, which does have a 100-foot RPA buffer that does encroach on the subject property. The Steeple Chase subdivision was approved in 1998, and the plat, as approved and recorded, shows the full 100-foot RPA buffer. Currently, as you can see, the rear yard is a maintained grass yard. So here is the survey that's shown above. I did highlight where the 50-foot and 100-foot RPA buffer is, that way you're able to see that the primary structure does encroach within that 50-foot landward portion of that 100-foot RPA buffer. Additionally, we also have a shed located on the property that does encroach within that 50-foot seaward portion. The existing tree line, let me see if I can pull this up, the existing tree line currently follows this line, which is the approximate area of the top of bank, so anything toward the home is right now cleared. The applicant proposes a total of 250 linear feet of fence to include three gates within the buffer area. The fence is proposed to extend from the rear of the home down the side property lines to enclose the backyard. The total proposed impervious area and land disturbance that is associated with insulation of the fence is about four square feet. The applicant has stated that the requested fence is to provide a backyard for their children and pets to utilize. The buffer restoration plan, as shown above, is composed of the appropriate ratio of canopy trees, understory trees, and shrubs or woody ground cover. The existing forested buffer just beyond where the fence is proposed is to remain and will not be impacted by this request. So in accordance with Section 31-415 of the UDO, an exception may be granted with conditions and safeguards as deemed necessary to further the purpose and intent of the overlay district if the following findings are made. The first is that granting the exception will not confer upon the applicant any special privileges that are denied by this ordinance to other property owners in the Preservation Area District, and that the exception request shall not be based upon conditions or circumstances that are self-created or self-imposed. As previously stated, the dwelling on the property was constructed in the 50-foot landward portion of RPA buffer, resulting in the entire rear yard being located within that buffer area, which has left any property owner unable to install a fence in a reasonable manner outside of the RPA. Additionally, the applicant, or this application is consistent with other requests that have been approved in the immediate area. Staff believes this request does not confer any special privileges that have been denied to other property owners, nor is this request self-imposed. Lastly, what I would like to cover is this exception request will not be injurious to the neighborhood or otherwise detrimental to the public welfare and is not of substantial detriment to water quality. Fences typically do not have significant areas of impervious surface, and therefore, if designed appropriately, do not impact the water quality functions of the vegetated buffers. The requested fence is proposed to be installed in the portion of the buffer that was previously cleared. Therefore, no existing vegetation needs to be removed for the installation of the fence. So staff finds that the applicant's request does satisfy the criteria outlined in Section 31-415 of the UDO to grant an exception to the requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Overlay District. Staff recommends approval of exception request, CEX 2021-010, with the recommended conditions as outlined in the attached resolution. I am available to answer any questions that you guys may have following the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brazil. We're now open to public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name's Emily Brady. My husband Jacob and I purchased this property back in July and just moved in in August. He is also active-duty military. We have three young boys at home, and we just adopted a dog last year. So we're looking to just have a safe backyard for our children to play in. We don't wander, want them wandering down into the wetland area down there with the water or anything like that. While living there, we have seen, on one occasion, some people wandering around in that area as well, and we're starting to come up towards our property. So I think they were just neighbors on a weekend enjoying some time, but we'd like to keep that privacy to ourselves. And then, in addition to the plantings we have there, my background is in landscape architecture, and throughout my career, I have worked in riparian, riparian corridors. So I would like to get the fence installed and then do additional designs with some native plantings to help with erosion control as the ground does slope down back there, to help kind of keep that soil in place and keep the water flow running as it should. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brady. Does anyone else like to speak in favor of this request? Does anyone like to speak in opposition? Hearing none. We're closed to public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to move approval of CEX 2021-010 with any conditions that may be applied.
Six conditions, okay. Got a motion for approval, Commissioner?
Second.
Got a second from Commissioner Everwine. Any discussion in the motion?
Mr. Chairman. I have a comment, I guess. But looking at the maps that we have here, it appears that the house is within, is not, it actually violates the 100-foot buffer. Is the house, was the house there before it was designated for these lines? I mean, the whole house is, was there an exception made, I guess, the question is, when, when the house was originally constructed?
All right. So these lots were created after the adoption of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Act. Majority of the lots within the Steeple Chase subdivision, a lot of them actually have the 100-foot RPA buffer on them. A lot of them are similar to this one where unfortunately, the buildable area is within that buffer. To my knowledge, there is no exception that was granted for the construction of the primary structure. It has been around for a long time, so I can't really speak to the decisions that were made at, at that time.
I, I would add that at the time, and I'd have to verify with regards to this specific address whether an exception was granted, but at the time, under the regulations of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area, there was a ability to, for the principal structure to have the RPA reduced to 50 feet. And I would speculate that that's exactly the case here.
Any other question, comments? If not, Mr. Goodman, you call the roll, please. And this is for approval with the six conditions.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations, Ms. Brady, you have approval. There's no further action is required, and thanks again for the service you do for the country. And the next item and the last items on our agenda today is Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 2021-001, the Downtown Master Plan. Mr. Goomins, will you read the caption, please?
Comprehensive Plan Amendment, CPA 2021-001 Downtown Master Plan, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Downtown Master Plan, a component of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan for the City of Suffolk in order to address changes in circumstances in the area commonly referred to as the Festival and Market Square. Consideration shall be given to the recommendation for and adoption of amendments to the Downtown Master Plan, a component of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan, as submitted by the Department of Planning and Community Development. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates the area as part of the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to amend the Suffolk Downtown Master Plan, a component of the Suffolk 2035 Vision for the Future of the Suffolk Comprehensive Plan, CPA 2021-001. And Dina Holt, our Business Development Manager with the Department of Economic Development, will provide staff report.
Thanks, Bob. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As Bob mentioned, I'm here today to present on amendments pertaining to the Downtown Master Plan. As a brief overview, many of you recall that the Downtown Master Plan was adopted in June of 2018, which was developed to address key issues within the core downtown area. One of the items addressed in the plan were three key areas for redevelopment opportunities, those being a festival site and Market Square location, one of them being Library Square location, and a third being a mixed, right here, mixed-use residential historic rehabilitation area, which we know as the Phoenix Block, Bank Block. The festival event and Market Square address the need for a location that would allow us to be able to have festivals, live music events, and create an area that would attract residents and visitors to downtown. The original concept outlined this area to be located behind the courthouse, where we would create an area at the Southern Inn, which is right here near F, of the parking lot, where a permanent stage would be located that could be utilized during events, and we'd close off a portion of the parking lot during these events to set up for vendors, and there would be space for attendees to bring chairs to enjoy concerts and, you know, what other events that we may have there. One of the problems with this concept was that, number one, you were going to be taking away parking for the event, so attendees would have to find additional parking in the area. And also, the people that were going to the events were going to be sitting on a hot paved surface, because remember, during the week, we were still going to be using this area as a parking lot to the courthouse. Although the main festival area was designated to be in the parking lot area, the consultants that wrote the Downtown Master Plan saw the benefit of the park that was located beside the courthouse, which is letter A, to be used for smaller events such as a beer garden area or to host events such as an outdoor art show. The city would like to maintain this area as the courthouse park and continue to use it for events, as you'll see on the screen. We do use this every year during the Taste of Suffolk, and we also have had smaller events. For instance, the Economic Development Department has hosted a football game when Virginia Tech and ODU played several years back, and it will still be a focal point while not being in use for an event space. We have gone in this past year and wrapped the trees in colorful lights, so if you're driving through downtown at night, hopefully, you know, it's a site of just colorful lights that we can change throughout the year. With having that background, the main reason I'm here today is to ask for an amendment of the downtown plan that moves the Festival and Market Square redevelopment area outlined in the current plan to the corner of South Saratoga Street and West Washington Street. The reason for this amendment comes after the events of August the 4th in 2020, when a tornado destroyed the buildings located at 113 South Saratoga, which was the former Knight Finance Building, as well as 219 West Washington Street, which is the former Brandon House Furniture Building. The city was able to purchase these buildings, making this a better location, we felt, for a festival event space. As you can see, the original elements of the space remain, to include a stage area and a location for vendors and food trucks, and we actually would be able to gain parking space at the site. The gateway entrance, as you can see right here, can be used to showcase upcoming events, and every great downtown has a great green space area, and in this new element, this allows us to have green space concept, which will be an asset to our citizens, especially ones living in the surrounding loft apartments. They would be able to utilize the area for outdoor picnics, or they'll be able to take their children out if they wanted to play ball or to throw the ball or kick soccer while the site is not in use for events. This area can also be utilized by private groups who would like to plan events outside of what the city will be offering. Here's an aerial view of the site. This is showing how it looks coming down Washington Street. We do plan to utilize the Parks and Recreation Mobile Stage at the beginning, so we can just make sure that the stage is set in the appropriate location. If staff feels as though the stage needs to be relocated before a permanent structure is built, we will be able to kind of get a feel for that over the first year or so of the space being designed. At this time, staff finds that CPA 2021-001 fulfills the criteria of the Comprehensive Plan and recommends approval as noted in staff's report. And with that, I would gladly answer any questions that you may have.
We would say the questions, we're going to open the public hearing, and thank you, Ms. Holt.
Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing. Is there anyone to come in favor of this other than Mrs. Holt? Is there anyone in opposition? Hearing none, we're closed to public hearing, and commissioners, questions to Mrs. Holt?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Holt, if you don't mind coming to the podium, I have a quick question. Assuming that this gets approved and moves on, what is the timetable for actual construction, completion, and I mean, when are we going to go to the first event?
I'm ready for next summer. So, but let's just make sure that everybody is on the same agreement with me.
So we're obviously anxious to get out there and have some fun. What lies ahead of us is the modification to the downtown plan, which you're seeing today. We will then go to HLC for demolition of the structures on site. We're going to be probably going in dual tracks along with the library project, doing some demolitions. So Washington Street over the next couple of months is going to look vastly different and transferring to a really brighter day. We would anticipate starting, and I'm thinking out loud as I'm answering your question, moving very quickly from demo into design simultaneously, and so hopefully towards fall, maybe, kind of, sort of, if everything kind of all works out in our favor, but there's a good chance that we'll be having concerts in 2023, and we'll do our best to try to have some events in 2022 towards the end.
Okay, so all the funding mechanisms and whatnot are in place, and vis a vis the capital improvements project, et cetera?
Yeah, so we, in your CIP, you've been providing funding for the downtown initiatives to include the event space. As we were working through the concept and the parking lot, we were holding back on some of that funding, so that's going to be moved into this new design effort, and so we also have some other avenues and existing funding for the construction and demo thereof as well.
And I guess, is this going to involve any shifting of funds? Because this project is, I guess, slightly more ambitious than just, you know, what was going to go on in the parking lot?
Yes and no. It's a different scale. We obviously were able to secure some funds last year in order to purchase the facilities, and we worked with city council to do that. And so we believe that we have a pretty decent or a good feel for the existing funding, upcoming funding, and rolling that in, as well as identifying some potential existing funding sources. So there will be some shift, and then we'll obviously be working with city council through the CIP, and you'll see that as well in future years. But we think we have a pretty good feel for existing funding, but as we evolve, and it could be a phased project as well, so we'll look at kind of all aspects of that.
Thank you very much for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Will you remain at the podium? Ms. Hughes?
Yeah, because I don't know who my question is for. I'm thinking specifically about the buildings that are on Saratoga Street now. How will it affect, for instance, the DAV in their parking lot?
We think the adjacent structures will be enhanced, so... So this is the existing parking lot that's there today. This is the old News Herald building that's being converted to apartments that I believe you've seen here recently. So we're going to, the plan is to improve the parking lot that's there today, and then the, is this the, is that it? Or is this the Western Tidewater?
The DAV is currently on West Saratoga, across from the Suffolk News Herald building.
So basically, we'll be improving the parking in and around the area that's there today, and we'll be coming further into their property, but it'll accentuate the public parking in the nearby area.
So will they lose their parking lot?
No, ma'am.
The parking lot behind their building is the parking lot they used?
No.
Okay.
Commissioner?
Well, either, I have one quick question. During the presentation, we had three, I guess, the festival, the library, and the Phoenix. My question is, are all three of those publicly funded, or any of those public-private operations?
So the current strategy on the library is a publicly funded project. The event space that we're highlighting today is a publicly funded project. I believe it was last week at the city council retreat, we discussed the Phoenix Bank Block. We own property that's the Phoenix Bank, the adjacent lot, and then on the opposite side, kind of like bookending the lot there. So the strategy we discussed with them that we got positive feedback on was to put those parcels on the street and issue an RFP. We issue them at the same time, but not necessarily together as one opportunity. And so we are going to test the marketplace, and that would potentially open up an opportunity for a public-private partnership, depending on what the responses are. So two of the three are public, and then there's potential for private investment on the other.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Mr. Staler, you had a question?
I've rethought it.
Any other questions, comments from the commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Hughes and Ms. Hicks. Uh, Holt?
Thank you.
Do we have a motion? Have we had a motion yet that week? We have?
I'll be happy to make one. So I'd like to move that CPA 2021-001, the adjustment to the comprehensive downtown plan, be approved as presented.
Second the motion.
Got a second from Commissioner Staler. No discussion, no motion? Mr. Goomins, you can call the roll, please.
Commissioner Creekmore?
Yes.
Commissioner Everwine?
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks?
Yes.
Commissioner Rector?
Yes.
Chairman Singleton?
Yes.
Commissioner Staler?
Yes.
Motion passes by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you again, Ms. Holt and Mr. Hughes. You can rest easy tonight. Get a go to council next month on the 20th. Okay, thank you. That completes our public hearings today. I'm not sure, I don't think we have any old business to readdress. On the new business, we have an appointment to the fiscal year 2023 and '20 to 2032 Capital Improvement Plan Subcommittee, and I've approached Commissioners Goodman and Commissioner Edwards, and they're both in agreement and affirmative that he will serve on that committee. I think the meetings will probably start sometime in October, late October, early November, and thanks for your acceptance of that request. Mr. Goomins, we have a status report from city council meeting?
Yes, at the August 18th meeting, rezoning request RZN 2021-010, this was an affordable towing, an automobile storage yard. The approval was approved. There was a companion item for that, Item D, a little further down, conditional use permit request CUP 2021-006, and this was the companion conditional use permit that also was approved. Under Item B, rezoning request RZN 2021-014, this was the planner station rezoning up at Kings Fork Road and Godwin Boulevard. That was approved as submitted. Conditional use permit request CUP 2021-001, this was for the Chucka Tuck Borrow Pit Expansion. That was also approved with conditions. Conditional use permit request CUP 2021-011, this was the Solinas Wilroy Road Solar Facility. If you'll recall, this body could not come to make a recommendation and had a split four-to-four vote on that. City council denied that request. And rezoning request RZN 2021-011, this was for Meadows Landing Phase Three out on, near the intersection of Jackson and Turlington Road, and that matter was tabled at that meeting and continued eventually... Eventually, that request was approved on September 1, 2021. That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. Are there any preliminary plats to approve? Do you have any? No, okay. Commissioners, comments? Have any?
Real quick comment. On behalf of the Planning Commission, we would understand our condolences to Erica Dolly, the city's clerk of court with the passing of her father. And also, this month is Prostate Cancer Awareness Month, so if you have a loved one who's a male, please urge him to get checked out. And thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Hughes. If there's nothing else, this meeting stand adjourned.